All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. We are live.
Thank you.
Welcome to the Sherwood City Council October 7th, 2025 work session. We have two items on the agenda tonight. We have the session wrap up with Senator Neuron Missland. Thank you for being here. And then after that, we will be having a follow up to our housing bill conversation. I think it's been a couple of months since we met last. We intentionally waited a little bit longer because we wanted to see where DLCD came out on the appeal for urban growth boundaries. We got some news on that, but we'll be talking about that second before our seven o'clock meeting. So with that, we'll start with Senator Missland. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Hi, thank you for having me. It's an honor. And I prepared a slideshow that has more content than time to go over it. So I'll go quickly through that. I'm gonna say good evening to everyone. And thanks for being interested in the work that I'm doing. And thanks for informing it along the way and for helping me understand the Sherwood experience. So I am Courtney Neuron-Missland, State Senator for Senate District 13, which includes Sherwood, Wilsonville, Tigard, King City, parts of South Beaverton and the community of Metzger. And so, oh, and that's the slide about me. So I started this last legislative session as Representative Neuron and then added my full legal name as I became Senator upon appointment. And of course, want to acknowledge the passing of Senator Aaron Woods, who served our district well. And I'm honored to be in the role that I'm in. This is a really complex slide of kind of what I did in the House of Representatives on the left side. And then the appointment to the Senate. So in the Senate, I was appointed to the Early Childhood and Behavioral Health Committee and the Transportation and Economic Development Ways and Means Committee. I am waiting interim and next session assignments. So that will be something that helps guide the work that I do for the 2026 and beyond service. I'm a member of many caucuses, including our childcare caucus, rail caucus, environmental caucus, and arts and culture caucus. And then interim is the time that we're in. So this report I'll go over is about the legislative session, which was six months this year. We also did just do the special session. I can't remember if I've updated all of the special session stuff. But the, the time we're in is technically called interim when we do a lot more outreach within the community, professional development, conferences, research, exploring ideas and really understanding what the lay of the land is and policies that are being implemented or need to be implemented. Throughout interim, we have legislative days in Salem. The next one will be November 17th through 19th, and then we'll meet again in January 13th through the 15th before our next session, which is February of even numbered years. So February 2026, we'll be back in Salem doing our cleanup short session. And some of you might have been tracking our special session that we just did in partnership with the previous legislative sessions, September 29th to October 1st. We finished up the special session, which was focused on a transportation bill that I see as kind of a Band-Aid measure because it really doesn't get at all of the issues that came up in the roadshow that constituents across the state told us they want us to be delivering on in the legislative work that we do. But what we did deliver in the special session bill was increased ODOT oversight. We maintained funding for hundreds of Oregon jobs that will do things like, you know, incident response on our highways and freeways, maintenance, filling potholes, plowing roads, clearing, you know, if an animal gets hit. One of the things that our district is celebrating is the removal of obsolete tolling language that we've been fighting against for many years. We also preserved, to an extent, much of the transit that constituents were advocating for. But that is, again, one of those pieces that's gonna need ongoing work to make sure that we are addressing the transit needs, stabilizing the transit that exists and responding to, you know, the transportation sector broadly with multimodal. And as I mentioned, the rail caucus, we do have rail conversations we need to have, but this one really is focused on making sure that our highways and state roads are, have basic operations and maintenance maintained. A very common list that you've heard me talk about here, my legislative focus and on behalf of the constituents I serve, really, we're focusing a lot in the past session and ongoing on addressing the cost of living. What we can do at the state level, we want to try to do. So making sure that we're looking at the cost of housing, healthcare, and protecting Oregon consumers and workforce. Talked a bit about transportation, but also looking at how we can protect our natural resources and climate future. There's a lot of work to do in that area. I've got the P20 called out for education because that's preschool to career in my mind. I do, I was the chair of the House Education Committee, which focused on K through 12. But I do see the education sector as a spectrum that we need to make sure we're addressing early learning opportunities all the way to bridging to quality jobs and preparing the workforce of the future. And then behavioral health and safety is something that I know Sherwood cares a lot about. I really try to uplift the work that we need to do there. And there's a lot of room to grow in that space right now. All right, delivering on some of Sherwood's priorities. And I know there are many more, but we've got a lot of transportation, housing and homelessness and infrastructure conversations that we've had. The Sherwood pedestrian bridge is something that we're celebrating right now. Highway 99's safety is an ongoing conversation. When I think about that, I think about the fact that it's the freeway to the coast that never was. It's also our local road to get to the school or drugstore. What we did in the 2025 package was really advocate and defend that 50-30-20 makeup so that 50% of the funds stay local in the counties and cities. So that breakdown was almost not defended in the long session. And it's one of the reasons why we had to have a special session. So we really hold that 50-30-20 distribution of funds dear. We also need to have conversations ongoing about stiff and safe routes to school. We need to be talking about great streets program, jurisdictional transfer. And I continue to work on the Boone Bridge effort. I did, I was able to secure $1 million despite the transportation package feeling. I was, I thought early on that this was not gonna be a project focused package. So I started working on some of the dollars that our district specifically needs for transportation. We were able to get $1 million to move forward with some studies to advance the Boone Bridge seismic and capacity upgrades. This is a picture that I took while stopped trying to get onto the Boone Bridge in the three lanes at Wilsonville southbound. If you're trying to get onto the freeway, you might have at some time.
Your passenger took that picture, right?
My passenger took that picture. And where I was the passenger. But this is a really typical scene and it's really speaks to the lack of capacity on the Boone Bridge. We have three lanes that merge into three lanes of I-5 traffic. And then a large percentage of those cars exit at the very next exit, the Canby and Charbonneau exit. So what we need is an auxiliary lane, so we don't have that bottleneck. All right, I'm gonna fly through a lot of slides and I can come back to them. I work a lot in childcare and early childhood. I've, we've done a lot to expand preschool. I see childcare as infrastructure that gets people to work, just like roads do. We need to make sure that there are pathways for parents to be able to choose employment if that is something that they and their families want. And then we also, in our office, work a lot on housing and homelessness. We can celebrate some of the housing preservation programs passing and some of the funding that went into senior and disability housing. But there are multiple things that I know Sherwood has tracked very closely in the housing sector that I was really appreciative of the partnerships along the way and the conversations that we've had with you all to help me understand the impact of some of the state level policymaking and how it was going to impact the communities I serve, which thankfully are really focused on providing a lot of the missing housing and doing that thoughtfully. So I was one of the only no votes on the shot clock bill. And one of two no vote, oh, I was the only Senator no vote on the shot clock bill, that still blows my mind. And one of two no votes on the pre-approved building plans. I do believe in a local process and I know Sherwood does as well. And I know that when communities bring land into their jurisdiction, that they want to be able to help that community grow responsibly. And smart growth, I think, requires some local oversight, local conversations. And I know Sherwood is really proud of the community that you all have built. And so I want to make sure that I, you know that I hear that and I try to represent that as best I can. So we also are talking about cost increases for consumers. We have a lot of utility increases. So this is a slide that shows some of our work in curbing the rising cost of utilities. We did the Fair Energy Act that requires that there's an economic assessment, essentially, what, how is this going to impact ratepayers before any rate increase? And it also prevents rate increases in the winter. And that was something that we heard loud and clear from the public, was incredibly stressful for families when the rate hikes in winter happen. Also, the performance based regulation is going to make sure that there's incentives and targets for utility companies that will encourage positive modernization and reliability improvements. And then we also have the Power Act, which has been broadly celebrated because of the, what different communities have seen when a data center moves in and the cost increases to the local community if a data center moves in. So now there is some protection for ratepayers if data centers move in.
Does that include improvements to transmission?
We need so much improvement to transmission. So even if it does, it doesn't conclude enough. So we're speaking on.
And specifically what I'm talking about is with these data centers going in. It's not just a local power impact. It, it's utilization of the transmission lines, even high voltage and stuff like that, which is pushing for improvements there. So does that, talk about that.
I would need to review it, but I think, you know, an example of an interim conversation that I'm having is how can we, when we have a high energy user move into a space, how can we incentivize them, like some offsets or something? One idea is to encourage that entity to be supporting local ratepayers, to be creating more efficiencies within their homes and helping to subsidize like solar or heat pumps or a new furnace. And then that would decrease the stress on those transmission lines so that it can potentially be kind of more of a neutral over time. We need to be creative because transmission needs a lot of work in Oregon. Yeah.
Senator Missland, I'd be happy to make an introduction. There's a factory in Tuolton that makes home battery units. And part of their whole sales pitch is, we'll even out that per of, you know, it can charge during the off peak or on peak or whatever. And, and so that when you have those spikes, it evens out the mash. And so anyway.
Yeah, I really want to encourage innovation.
Fully, so.
Do, yeah.
Say, I feel like they could also help you with, if you're gonna say, hey, how much do we have to subsidize to get those houses battery ready or, you know, or battery, you know, I feel like that could help too.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, we definitely want to encourage innovations, ratepayer protections, and making sure that we're being creative around our transmission issues. We had a lot of conversations around microgrids, battery storage and things like that. So other cost increases that we tried to curb, our manufactured home communities have spoken loud and clear about the fact that while they own the home that the land is on, they are renting the land. So that land was increasing at exponential rates. And they were at risk of actually not even being able to afford to move their investment off of that property.
And that's a lot of lower income and senior community.
Yes, absolutely. And they showed up in force to advocate. And we really tried to be as responsive as possible to some of what they identified as predatory practices of their management and owner, of the owners of the property. We also were thoughtful and carved out the smallest parks that are kind of more mom and pop. But this will really stabilize a lot of our senior communities who are at greater risk of becoming houseless. And a lot of our local manufactured home communities really showed up. So a lot of King City and Sherwood residents were involved in the advocacy that led to a 6% cap. And we also, in that bill, prohibited management from requiring things like interior inspections of the home. The management doesn't own the actual property that the homeowner has purchased to put on that land, for example.
I'll still allow the formation of new parks.
Oh, I believe so.
So that's probably a bad thing.
Another conversation to have.
What's the exceptions for small parks?
I think it was if it was 30 or 40 or below. I need to go back and look at what the final bill language said. But it was something where we kind of looked at, you know, where does it look like, where is there outside investment coming in that's not really with the community's best interest and local interest and investment happening? And then, oh, there's another thought I was gonna share. Anyways, I might come back to it. No, that's fine. It's just a lot of, lots of thoughts to share today. And then banning online hidden junk fees. So you have to know what your fees are before you agree to that purchase. There's still a lot of consumer protections that we can do as a member of the House Commerce and Consumer Protections Committee. I really appreciated the work we did relative to fair ticket sales, et cetera. There's, you know, insurance and car information that we were able to protect. I might have it in future slides, but one of the things we did is we protected children's information as well, location, data sharing and stuff, et cetera, and stuff like that, so that we can really start to etch away at where consumer privacy is vulnerable. Behavioral health and safety, we redefined the civil commitment standards. We also granted $6 million in behavioral health workforce grants. And we did a few bills to really address some gaps in the law relative to domestic violence survivor rights. One of the biggest ones is removing the reporting timelines for childhood abuse and sexual assault, recognizing that an average age for reporting childhood abuse is actually in the 40s or 50s. And so people often don't realize until they're adults what has happened. So as we've removed the statutes of limitations for reporting childhood abuse. In terms of addiction and recovery, we addressed a lot around opioid use, treatments, substance use prevention programs, addressing our fentanyl crisis with stronger penalties for dealing fentanyl. For example, Senate Bill 236 wrapped in one of the bills that I'd been working on with Washington County. So while that bill that I introduced didn't necessarily move forward, the language was embedded into Senate Bill 236 to make sure that Washington County is able to access some of the funding. Just all we had to do is change a definition of one little thing and a facility there that aligns with the goals of the, the, the funding is eligible now. And then we also secured some critically needed investments in behavioral health facilities. And one of them that will be serving our district is the Clackamas Recovery Campus. We definitely need to expand in Washington County. So we were kind of like, you know, what are the Washington County, Washington and Clackamas County goals and responded to those. In terms of healthcare, it worked a lot on the international licensure for pathways for physicians. I believe in acknowledging equivalency of skill. So if somebody is an immigrant or refugee arriving with a skill set that can serve Oregonians, we want to make sure that they are able to work at the top of their training appropriately. And so this permits the Oregon Medical Board to provide provisional license for somebody who might be an internationally trained physician. And so there's still oversight, there's still a governance body over this. But that way, an individual who is here is not prohibited from working within their profession and their field. We did workplace violence prevention. We also did the corporate practice of medicine, doctor-owned decisions in healthcare bill, which is Senate Bill 951. For some people, tracking that, that is really one of those bills that puts patients over profit and that the doctors will now be able to own their decisions more easily.
Good question on that.
Absolutely.
Is that the, the doctor actually administering care? Or will these healthcare companies be able to hire a doctor to make those decisions when they're not fully giving the care?
I would need to phone a friend to get you an answer beyond the fact that essentially, if a physician has offered a judgment about what should happen, there cannot be a non-physician that prevents that from happening. And then the comprehensive post reproductive healthcare insurance is also pretty exciting in terms of peri-menopause, menopause, and post-menopause. Those will now be covered by OEB and PEB insurances beginning in 2026. So hormone therapy, antidepressant medications, osteoporosis prevention and treatment medications will soon be covered by those insurance plans. I can't see the title of this one, but this is, again, protecting privacy, the bills that I mentioned earlier, child data and car privacy. Also, we extended the right to repair to wheelchairs, which are very expensive to repair and have to be sent away. Now they can be, the parts and the information to repair, then something can be available to repair shops if it is also already provided to authorize service providers to repair. In terms of natural resources, and I'll go quickly, we've addressed wildfire funding, but we need to do more. We've addressed PFOS, but we need to do more. And we've addressed water use. One of the ones that small farms around Sherwood were reaching out about was making sure that they were able to access groundwater for commercial gardens that were of a certain size, so smaller than some of the larger farms. And now they are able to. As the Chair of the K-12 Committee in the House, I was not in charge of budget, but I was in charge of policy. We looked at a lot of things. We looked at summer learning, we looked at accountability measures, we looked at investments in literacy. And a few of the other ones I'm really celebrating are things like the calculation of the current service level. So I get really nerdy really fast on the current service level for schools. And one of the advocacy points that I've really tried to drive home is that in addition to adequate funding, our schools benefit from stable funding. And our calculations have been misaligned with practices for far too long. So I've been working on this bill for quite a while. Thanks to the governor's leadership this session, we were able to get it through. And so ideally, this House Bill 2140 at the top will actually stabilize some of the understandings about how much does it cost to deliver the same level of education year upon year as we budget going forward in the legislative process. Statewide student data standards is something that I'm also ready to geek out on because what we've had is many different ways of collecting student data. This will align the student data. So instead of having to push out, all of the secretaries that are wonderful schools are pushing out, you know, 300 reports every year. I want a system where ODE can simply pull congruent data when they need it. How many kids were absent last week in Oregon? They should be able to pull that. So this will help get us to a state understanding and much more agile and usable information. Really, at the core of this, and my motivation for this was supporting students with IEPs and, and students with, who are highly mobile, whether that's because they're houseless or as just a family that moves a lot. We need their information to travel with them instantaneously and not arrive two weeks after they do. All right, I'm gonna go quickly because I know this is a city presentation and you're interested in the local economy. We did what we could and in a restricted budget environment, our revenue forecast was not optimistic. We were still able to invest in things like baseball, some festivals, new markets that is going to be hopefully a source of pride for the Portland economic scene and then the arts broadly. And that's also thanks to the advocacy of the Arts and Culture Caucus, looking at what the arts bring to our communities. We restored recreational immunity. We also invested not enough in the industrial site readiness loan fund. Our district, our Senate district alone, needs about $45 million to leverage and create income of about, I believe it's $110 million estimate. If we invest 45 million, it's a benefit to the state. Statewide, we invested 10 million. This, these dollars help unlock land for industrial development, which I know Sherwood understands well. And then ideally, we're stimulating long-term and strategic growth, supporting the jobs that we want in our communities. In the past, I've fought a lot for regionally significant industrial sites program and the CHIPS Act, again, with the childcare component as part of our economic lens. Some of the community priorities that I have advanced this session were the Brookman Pipeline in the city of Sherwood. We need to be investing in what's in the ground in order to be building what's on top of it. And those housing infrastructure dollars were, became a real clear focus. At the end of session, we were able to secure the 3.2 million for the construction of new neighborhoods in Sherwood West, which, again, I know that we've passed some bills that are frustrating because I want you all to have those local conversations and oversight over what is in Sherwood West as it grows.
Can I comment on that too? That, that's really important because what's not up there that, just kind of a nuance for people to understand, if we hadn't gotten that 3.2 million, we would have had to raise SDCs on every single home that went into those areas. Basically, this side of the watershed is Sherwood West to cover those costs because we don't have other ways of funding it. So that actually will help us reduce SDCs in those areas.
I really appreciate that. And, you know, I'm hopeful that that will transfer to lower costs for those purchasing and living in that area as well. So I also was able to, as I said, secure the $1 million for the studies. The studies that they're going to begin with are geotechnical and archaeological studies. And then we'll keep asking for the next $6 million that's needed. My goal is to get the Boone Bridge shovel ready for federal investment down the line. But we cannot expect the federal government to come in until the Oregon Legislature has prepared that project for the federal investment. So I want us to get that $6 million and I'll keep etching away at that. All right, and then really important for safety and justice is having a courthouse that serves in a trauma-informed way, is seismically upgraded and actually has the capacity for a growing Washington County. So I've been advocating for the Washington County Courthouse replacement project and we were able to secure 1.25 million for the planning and design. And with the Clackamas County Courthouse, I saw that project through from this phase to the end. That one opened earlier this spring. And that was a huge project and it's so worth doing. And I really want to encourage people that are excited about the courthouse in Washington County to go visit the Clackamas County Courthouse to see what that can deliver. Timely justice, making sure it's ADA compliant, trauma informed. Right now, we have situations in our courthouses where a victim has to pass by the perpetrator or the accused and, and is really not trauma informed. So these are safe and, and secure and informed courthouses that we can build. Washington County growing really fast, definitely has grown, outgrown its current courthouse. Previously funded projects that we're celebrating, a few of these we've already mentioned, but I'll add on, Wilsonville is doing a transit oriented development and that's affordable housing. I helped bring in the dollars for the ground floor services. The food bank cafe will be there as well as a welcome center so people can wait inside for their bus. And then Tigard's Just Compassion Shelter, we were able to invest and that, that shelter just added 60 new beds and the courthouse as well. This is a lot of numbers. I think what I'll go over is how important it is that we had over 100,000 pieces of written testimony from Oregonians and others who were able to inform the policies that we passed in the legislature. We had over 17,000 people sign up to testify in public hearings. And that just really speaks to a high level of public engagement. But also, one of the things that came out of COVID is we have a lot more virtual options, which makes testifying in Salem, you know, your face is this big in our Salem court, in our Salem hearing rooms and as big as the screen that we're looking at as people virtually testify from rural Oregon or while they're taking care of their child or, you know, from work on the 15 minute break. And so they've got options and abilities that we didn't have prior to COVID. Very little silver lining came from COVID, but I do think our ability to be welcoming of testimony from abroad has made our hearing spaces more accessible. We sent 640 bills to the governor for signature.
That's a tough question.
Absolutely.
I think for a lot of bills that worked really well, there were some bills in the. I think for a lot of bills that worked really well, there were some bills in the, the glaring example I can think of is. The governor's in the session Band-Aid Bill for transportation, which was literally dropped. Hours before a work session uh, to get voted through to the House. So there was virtually no time for groups to organize and uh. Read it, just it, read it, understand it uh, before it was all sudden, and I know it's not you. But I'm just curious, because there's examples of where there's gut and stuff, bills late in the game. Is there any conversation about how to kind of stop that behavior so we have more time on some of those critical bills to have that public conversation?
Yeah, I think um, I want to answer in a couple ways, one is thanks to really strong partnerships. A lot of people from our district were able to show up and notice that bill didn't pass, it wasn't a good option. Uh, we were able to sound the bells loud and clear um, in partnership as legislators with our communities. That this was not a bill that should fly. Um, but uh, beyond that, I think one of the um, responses that we're hearing from. Um, legislators, advocates, community members, is that there have been too many bills. So bill limits has been something that has been floated many, many times. Um, because it has been um, a lot to track and sometimes things move really fast to the last minute. We do really rely on teams in our legislative offices to be tracking um, the bills and the votes that we're taking. And you know, it is, I would guess, something um, that we will, I can anticipate. This has been very serious conversations around bill limits, so that there's not that kind of hyper last minute um, urgency. The transportation conversation is one where we were trying to solve a really challenging uh, jigsaw puzzle. We were not successful during session, it required that special session. Um, but again, I just, it was, I was watching the hearing from my office and so proud of the whole front row being. You know, Washington County Commissioners and mayors and city council members. Who were, you know, able to show up at the drop of a hat. We had another bill where, you know, I was on the phone and a superintendent showed up within hours of something being amended and posted. And you know, they're just, they're, it really, those strong partnerships have really served to make sure that our communities are well heard, so.
Just because it works doesn't mean that it's okay that that's the practice, right? Because there's other times where it probably doesn't work, because you can't marshal or people can't get, don't have enough time to. Before, I don't know, that's, I think that gets Tim's point, it's your point about limits, would that be like on a per legislator basis? It'd be like a, you're like, because I just doing the math, that's thirty seven bills per legislator, math on your. Uh, measures that were, you know, the two thousand plus twelve hundred and there's ninety legislators.
One legislator?
That seems absurd to me, in a session that someone would introduce ten or twelve bills.
You know, that whole um. Map ballot measure that passed that limited uh, the number of days that somebody can walk out, it wasn't a perfect fix. Just limiting bills is not a perfect fix. So the legislator that um, introduced way too many bills, also doesn't do amendments to bills necessarily. He just introduces them all as a separate bill, whereas, you know, you have to have a conversation, are you also limiting the amendments you can do to a bill? Because every amendment requires another process as well. Um, and then when we see the big numbers in bills, you know, not all the things that are in that six hundred forty. Are, you know, massive revolutionary changes, the joint resolutions, the joint memorials, those are um, things honoring. Members of our communities, um, concurrent resolutions or value statements oftentimes, so um, there's um. There are quite a few, the resolutions and memorials are definitely a component that are not necessarily um. And a lot of those pass, right, so.
So are the resolutions and memorials in, but they're not part of the six hundred and forty?
Yeah, we sent six hundred and forty to the.
So you said, you said concurrent resolutions and, and you're counting the res, the concurrent resolutions, joint resolutions, memorials uh, in the six forty bills?
I believe so, I can go back and check if you want exact numbers.
Even if six forty somewhere, just little tiny fixes, six forty is still, it's in, it's insane for you, each member of the legislature to. Um, come to a conclusion that six hundred and forty are worth passing, uh, because you started off with a. Dump truck, ton truck, load of them, it's, it's, it's crazy and just the.
When you're voting, like. How do you even know that you're voting, you know what I mean? Like, we had over two hundred bills come to my education committee, so I knew how much time we had to hear bills. Just because a bunch of bills are introduced doesn't mean they're all heard, we only have a finite amount of hearing time. So I prioritized within the um, the bills that came to me, the ones that I knew had either bipartisan support, had been well worked. Were really the solutions that we needed for the time we're in, and then those are the ones that got the hearings. And we moved the ones that were ready forward out of the committee to the Ways and Means Process. Or to their next committee, because some bills have to go through multiple committees, so there's a vetting process. Um, beyond just how many, I'll just name one of the critiques that I have, is that bills that cost money go through one vetting process. Bills that don't cost money, sorry, those that cost money go through one vetting process. Bills that don't cost money go through two policy committees, I actually think that before we spend money, we should double that. You know, a lot of it is just due to time.
Definition of, there's costing the state money from their general fund, and then there's bills that cost citizenry money.
Where cities.
Where cities.
Um, what do you mean by cost cities?
So, I, so it, so you, you have a bill, bills that cost, bills that cost money, bills that don't cost money. And is it true that bills that cost money, money being state money? Bills that don't cost money don't cost state money, but could cost other, others money.
Which is what your um, my communities that I represent and your leadership has been able to flag for me. And ideally, some of my colleagues um, as well, um, ideally more of my colleagues next time around.
Funded mandates.
I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to be, you know, self.
Acronym in my education committee, um, financially unsupported education requirements, which if you kind of just spell it out, it's. The word fewer, or you can say it fewer, we want fewer financially unsupported education requirements, and I know the cities and counties feel the same.
Five more minutes.
So last slide, just some of the things that I'm working on here, some of the meetings um, that I'm taking. You know, I take meetings from constituents and my community members all the time. Um, but I'm working on um, bills like Tenzie's Law, uh, we have a really. Important body of work that we've got to deliver on, and it has met it in a roadblock every single time we've introduced it. Um, parent caregivers for medically fragile children are quitting their jobs to provide the care that we don't have the workforce for. Um, and we really want to make sure that they are able to get um, paid for their work, they are part of our workforce. And uh, the current state law um, means that very few of them, we did etch away at this challenge. Uh huh, uh, very few of them are able to qualify for um.
But yet, some caregiver is getting paid, somebody.
If your child is older than eighteen, you can get paid. It's a problematic dynamic we've been trying to address, and I'm gonna keep coming at it, because the state hasn't been able to let this one through yet.
We also, the nurse licensure, you know, nurse and caregiver and different, you know, with the physician when getting passed. If we could do it for other ones, there are caregivers and other people that are trying to come to this country to, that are. Literally trained by US schools that are not able to get an organ license, because we're not part of the pact or different.
Yeah, slightly different topic, but I absolutely agree, that we have a lot of work we can do. Um, I work a lot in special education funding and making sure that we're investing equitably in special education. I would like nothing more than to see the eleven percent cap on special education go away, it's indefensible. Um, and then I also work on achieving school meals for all, um, we are very close to becoming a universal school meal state. Um, even in the current um, federal budget decisions. Um, and then we also need to be talking about improved school facilities. Uh, we need to be talking about vulnerable communities and um, one of the communities that I uplift in my work. It are the women at Coffee Creek and their experiences. Um, I would like to bring back a tattoo removal program so that their antisocial tattoos or um, human trafficking tattoos can be removed before release. Um, and then also um, looking at early childhood support, again, childcare very important to me. Um, accessing affordable childcare is another um, different effort, but um, something that I work on. And then I do think that we need to be improving our electric school bus infrastructure, electricification of our transportation sector. Um, a lot of that, that work was left out of the transportation work that we passed in the special session. But I do want to see us um, not leaving that behind, and then I work a lot on animal rescue entities. We have really hardworking uh, rescue entities that are um, addressing the overpopulation of our pets. And they are paying exorbitant fees to do so. So we're, we're trying to put that into rule instead of into statute, and I do think we have a bipartisan solution that will be moving forward. And with that, my presentation is done, I talked fast, I'm happy to go back.
We got one minute for questions.
I hate electric buses and until the cost of them is closer to the cost of diesel or gas or natural gas. So, but I imagine we're getting closer.
Part of the cost parity is part of the trigger.
Is just what's, what Keith is referring to is um, our garbage hauler bought two electric um, dump trucks. That right there raised our local rates by about forty cents, because they're in, oh, oh, more than double the cost.
Of the C and G's.
Of the C and G vehicles, so that parity thing is really important.
Yeah, I'm glad you're conscious of that.
There's also money through DQ that they might be able to tap into, I'm not quite sure if. They probably are aware of the opportunities, okay, interesting.
Also, if you throw a battery in front of that charger, it evens out that and charges. Anyways, so we're gonna move on to our second uh, work session as we talk.
I'd love to stay, I'm so interested in what you're. Yeah, thank you.
Actually, I want you at the table.
I do want to thank you for all the efforts you've, you've made on our behalf and succeeded on our behalf. A lot of the money you brought to our community and the other things you've done, so.
Excellent, acknowledge that was six months in a slideshow, but there's a lot more agenda put in there. So if you are like, but I thought she was working on Foodways, I am. So like, if there's another thing you want to talk about, make a meeting with me, I'd be happy to connect about and uplift the work that you want me to do.
While they're getting ready, I just want to amplify that, you have been a staunch advocate of home rule and protecting cities' rights to. Uh, manage a lot of the processes and.
It's easy to do and you have confidence in your cities, thanks Sherwood.
They convinced some of your friends. Oh, maybe. Oh, there we go.
Are they not her friends?
I mean, they might be, but I don't want to assume.
Cameras can be rounded back.
There is a spot right here.
So as I mentioned at the beginning, this is our follow-up discussion, we had a discussion after the close of the. The long session to review some of the uh, housing related bills that came out of Salem. I think there was two of you that weren't able to attend that, uh, so we wanted to have a follow-up for just that reason. And secondly, we wanted more discussion on what kind of actions we want to take, is really something to go with that. So that is this music meeting, and I'm gonna turn it over to Eric Rutledge, our Community Development Director. And we also have Carrie Ritter, our only assistant attorney here, to help us out.
That's right, and also, of course, our city attorney Ryan Adams has been helping on this as well, so thank you Mayor Rosener. Um, so we uh, talked about this last in July, um, and purpose of the work session is to. Inform city council, but also any of the residents listening about the, the housing legislation passed during the last session. Discuss any impacts to existing city limits um, and Sherwood West, and uh, I can give an update on the, the Sherwood West appeal process if you'd like. Um, and then determine any next step with regulation updates. Why don't I just stop really quick and give a quick update on Sherwood West, I think everyone's aware, but for the public as well. Um, we just uh, Metro's decision uh, was appealed to LCDC, Land Conservation and Development Commission. LCDC upheld Metro's decision to expand the boundary for Sherwood West, so it's been appealed twice now. Uh, both times it's been upheld uh, at the state level, and so the decision stands. We do expect an appeal to the Court of Appeals, uh, there is a very specific timeline for that, so we'll keep you informed on, on that as it progresses.
Someone ultimately could get appealed to the Supreme Court beyond that.
It could, it could.
It's unlikely that the Supreme Court in some, in a case, that would, would accept review, but it could be.
Thank you. Well, we've had several groups indicate they plan on appealing it to that level if they have to.
Correct.
And it's all the same groups that initiated the appeals at the beginning.
Yeah, correct, it, it is a dwindling number based on who continues to appeal. Uh, I assume everyone would have the right to appeal who participated in LCDC, so at this point, it's down to six, six different parties have rights to appeal to.
If they weren't a party of the last appeal, they can't appeal.
Correct, so we're down to, we're down to six right now.
The costs get higher in a deal, so the. Number of groups gets smaller.
Um, so we will go through, uh, the first one's actually from twenty twenty four, and there's just been a lot of movement on that lately. So I just wanted to give an update on that, that's uh, Senate Bill fifteen thirty seven from twenty twenty four. Um, and then the twenty twenty five, to use one of the mayor's phrases, tools and rules, uh, there's five, four that we will go over today. Uh, three of them are rules for cities, one of them is a tool for cities. Um, and so with that, we'll jump right in, so the first one from twenty twenty four is Senate Bill fifteen thirty seven. This is the bill that created the Housing Accountability and Production Office, so there's a new uh, statewide uh, housing office called HAPO is the acronym. Um, and a few different purposes, but one of the main one is to ensure compliance with uh, state housing laws. They also provide some resources in terms of model code um, and other research and analysis. Um, the other uh, uh, big change with uh, SB fifteen thirty seven. Is that cities, and we've talked about this, but cities are required to approve certain adjustments, we call them uh, commonly variances. For houses, for certain housing developments, has to be over seventeen units per acre and a few other, um, a few other requirements to qualify for those adjustments. There is an exception process for cities to apply for an exception to applicants applying for the adjustments. Um, and so we have submitted that, it's in review right now with the HAPO office. Uh, it's fairly complex, the, the system and the process and the approval criteria, but we're going through that process right now, so we'll keep you informed on how that, how that progresses.
So this exception wouldn't, doesn't have to be made every, on every application, it's kind of a blanket. This rule will, if we're granted the exception, then we're, we, we, this doesn't apply to us.
And we do not have to process the mandatory adjustments pursuant to the state, to this mandatory state law. However, we are under pressure, if you will, to continue to approve variances. You have to uh, show that you've approved ninety percent of the variances over the past five years, which for Sherwood is not a lot, as soon as we deny one variance, then we're out of the program.
So the state.
So it almost seems like.
That we're gonna follow our code, to give us an exception to follow our coding.
It's kind of, it's, to your point, it's a weird thing, because to get that variance, you have to show that you already allow for those variants, so it's a point.
Not sure we should bother with the effort.
That's the pattern we're seeing with cities that have gotten that uh, approval for that exception, I think like Oswego was one of them.
We are paying close attention and doing a lot of our own sort of analysis on whether it's worth it to hold that exemption. Uh, we can pull the application if we'd like, um, and so I think we, we've applied, like we'll see kind of how it's interpreted. How it might apply in Sherwood, and then we'll make the calls to whether or not to.
If I could make a request, it, based on our experience and how many builders come and submit variance requests that we end up having to provide. I just want to know, I'd love to have a, a rec, a record of who those builders are, who those developers are, just so that.
Although you just said we don't give very many requests.
Common actors or. Especially because we're gonna be doing um.
Well, we don't get a lot of variance requests because it's a process to go through it. This bill basically says we ought to automatically. Any, any variance request that comes in, so I would anticipate we will get a lot more.
Is it truly any variance?
Any, there are certain criteria, seventeen units per acre or greater, uh, has to be for housing, of course. Um, that there are certain criteria, the main one is seventeen units per acre. They also have to show that it will increase the number of units, reduce the cost of the units, there's some approval criteria, which are very easy to meet, but there's some approval criteria as well.
And there is a floor for many of them, you have to have, you can, you can reduce the lot coverage requirements. Um, all the way, but you have to leave twenty five percent of whatever that lot.
Okay, but it may not be our normal setbacks or whatever.
You can reduce the set box, you can, you know, the setback, I, I don't remember, we can look it up, but the, the set, you know, whatever your standard setbacks are, they can be reduced by fifty percent.
Okay.
So it doesn't say no setbacks, it says they can be reduced by fifty percent, or.
Right.
Heights uh, can be increased by thirty feet or one floor. Can't build a twenty five story building. Can't build a twenty five story building.
Right. That's what I I I wanna stay away from the hyperbole of hey, we have to approve any variance because it still feels like there's some guidelines around it and I I'd be interested a little bit on.
Well, it's it's clearly defined in the bill.
There's a long, long, long list.
Yeah, at the end of this presentation, I'll be going over all the work that the planning department is going to be doing related to getting into compliance with state laws. And I think that's a great. So we'll be coming back to you fairly often over the next year or two on all sorts of.
But but in my mind, fifteen thirty seven was the least egregious of the bills, except for that last bullet.
Yeah.
So could you talk, cause that's the that's the problematic one. If you could talk about that one a little bit.
Yeah. So the last one is um around uh uh application types and what types of development or applications are required to be processed as limited land use decisions. Limited and Carrie, jump in anytime. Limited land use decisions have been in the state law for since the early nineties. Um there were specific applications that were required to be deemed limited land use applications. The state law at the time said cities can uh adopt their own comprehensive plan and land use regulations to process limited land use decisions. And that's the code that we have today. Ranges from type two all the way up to type four. Type four requires a public hearing. Um appeal goes to city council. Though the those are the procedures that we have in place right now. The law, uh there was, I guess, an attempt or a desire through Senate Bill fifteen thirty seven to really specify what procedures could be applied to limited land use decisions. And it basically, the intent was to say you can no longer require a public hearing. The notice has to be only one hundred feet instead of five hundred feet or a thousand feet um and so forth. That was the intent of the bill. Uh the the interesting part is that it also would have applied to non-residential development. So even though it's a housing bill, there was no sort of carve out, if you will, for commercial industrial. The Department of Justice at the at the state level uh issued, and we we haven't seen it unless you have, uh we haven't seen it yet, but basically DOJ was working with Hapo and D L C D came out with an interpretation that essentially said when that state law was drafted, there was a provision, the provision from the nineties that said cities can still use their comprehensive plan procedures. That was not struck from the the bill. And so the DOJ interpretation was said, even though you said in this section that you shall use these procedures, which was the lesser the hundred feet and a public notice, the bill failed to remove this other section that says cities can still use their own procedures. And so we are now continuing to process limited land use applications under our own procedures as an interpretation of the state law, supported by the DOJ. Um I guess the.
Just missed and even and they'll go back and strike it next time.
It it seems like it was an oversight. Yes. Um the interesting part, and just to have everyone understand like what that would actually mean for Sherwood, um we we no longer have an application for a Costco in Sherwood. That application has expired. Um but that application for a sixty thousand square foot building, significant community impacts, uh traffic onwards would have by state law not allowed a public hearing. There's that decision would have been made by staff. So that that's uh I think the good news for Sherwood, given our, you know, focus on public participation at the local level, that the mess up, if you will, I think is is a good thing for Sherwood.
But didn't the the uh I don't know if it was the DOJ or Hapo said they fully expect to fix a bill on this.
I've heard both.
Yeah.
I've heard both. I've heard they're not. I've heard they are. I'm not sure. Um so that was a a really kind of big change. It wasn't, to be honest with you, I took looked a lot at this bill and it wasn't something that I caught. It was it was sort of buried in in the bill. Uh but that's S P fifteen thirty seven. Moving to twenty twenty five, and I wanna move fairly quickly here. If you do, if you have questions, please jump in anytime. I wanna make sure that we answer any questions as we go. S P nine seven four is um was passed twenty twenty five. I think the way to see this without getting reading all the details is that it does not allow cities, including Sherwood, to apply our design standards essentially for subdivisions that are over twenty units, which is fairly typical in Sherwood. So uh applicant comes in for a subdivision uh over twenty units. Our recently adopted design standards would not apply. Uh this bill does not apply to multifamily structures over three units. Um and it does not apply to subdivisions under twenty units. Um so there are so some carve outs. Um it does, this is actually.
Clarification, the twenty units of the over twenty units. Or if it's multifamily, what is that? Three units? So do they, does do the multifamily units play into the twenty units?
So we we know.
Twenty units is single family.
Single family.
Okay.
Or middle housing.
So basically wouldn't apply to.
So it's duplexes and single family detached of over twenty units.
Yeah.
Um the next point is very, very similar to what the previous bill that we discussed about process, what it attempted to do. This bill actually had a pretty clean uh implementation, if you will. So um the bill limits public notice and hearing procedures. It 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 kind of puts it into a limited land use procedure in terms of um the notice requirement and the public hearing uh restrictions really for zone changes that um densify a site for planned unit developments um and for uh uh various for various variances to.
Residential standards.
Residential standards. Thank you. So this one was successful. So planned unit developments, we see a lot here in Sherwood. Those typically go to you guys for a final decision. Those will no longer go to you.
And it gets me because for the P U D, there has to be a public interest. And we have a lot of talk on council when P U D comes to us of what that public interest is and and how that's determined. So now we get to staff get to determine what are
Yes.
What the public interest is gonna be?
That's the that's what is, that is the effect of this.
Not those that were elected to represent the community and bring things to the best interest of them.
The that that code, those code standards in terms of determining the public interest will be now determined by staff. Unless there's an appeal.
And and to be and to be clear, even if in Carrie correcting if I'm wrong, if say that the hypothetical, there's a five hundred unit development going in of duplexes and below, and it's a P U D. Uh that would be a staff decision, even if council wanted to have a work session on that to give guidance to staff, that we couldn't do that, correct?
So the public hearing or a public meeting.
You know what's interesting? Just as you're talking on on the spot, you know, oftentimes with P U Ds, there's a concurrent application, meaning there's a subdivision application or some other type of application. So I think that's an open question and and to the extent that we can process these and bring them to, you know, through another application, certainly would do that, but it's we can look into that.
But that's just minutes. They'll just apply for it differently to keep it within.
Can we do away with P U Ds? Do we have to allow them?
P U Ds are based in.
No, you don't have to allow them.
Uh just in a matter of time, just to to keep moving, uh the.
We need to run a little longer, we can.
Okay. The bill also uh put timelines for review on final engineering plans. Historically, there have been no uh timelines on engineering review after land use approval was obtained. Now it's under twenty days, similar to land use review.
I I'd love to understand the thinking of the lawmakers in Salem. Yeah, what's the public interest in removing public process? Uh it's a rhetorical question, but
love to understand.
That goal line is still there.
I know. Yeah.
Senator, I still voted against that.
This this bill, this bill was um written and heavily pushed by the Real Estate Association of Oregon.
I understand their interest entirely. I just don't understand.
Property owners. Property owners.
Home builders.
Yeah.
You would think that. I just don't understand that. I understand that.
Think if you're a developer and you're going in a community, you want to be really proud of your project, you wanna, you know, get buy in by the community.
The idea is that I think the theory is that uh these public hearings where there's opportunity for discretion drag things out. And they delay the production of housing, I believe, is the theory.
And we see it increase the cost, I'm sure, right? I mean.
Yeah, if I am a developer and I can go to staff and I know I'm gonna get a decision more quickly and I don't have to go to city council, it takes.
And your city doesn't have to know anything about it.
Yeah.
Well, but so and we as a city council can't say, hey, for every P U D that comes in, we want there to be one of these three things. We can't do that ahead of time, even before anybody's applied for anything. We can't say we gotta have a park or we gotta have a, it's so very.
Hard to predict.
It's on the application.
I mean, the problem is you can write standards, but you have to, it's one's standards are one size fits all. Right? So you're gonna treat us three, you know, three unit P U D and a five hundred unit P U D the same. I mean, that's that's why P U Ds exist. Allow for discretion and.
Right. But that's the thing is that if if we if we come in and say, all right, well, and if we can't have that discussion after, then we've gotta lay it out ahead of time, which is actually worse.
And staff go through the process of of meeting with the community and find out what the the community says about all this.
We can send public notice within a hundred feet.
Um.
Houses.
Yeah.
And.
That joke. So. So they they shrunk it from a thousand to a hundred feet.
Well, I think this this bill says basically you can only follow the procedures in this bill, and then it says a hundred feet. Let me double check just.
If you tell me, can I just tell everybody I want to?
What's that?
If you were to tell me on it, I could tell anybody about it.
Yes, anyone can comment on it. Correct. Anyone can comment, but the public notice is restricted, so we couldn't do more public notice, but if it gets out, we will accept all the public testimony.
You couldn't, you are like, you couldn't.
But there wouldn't be a hearing to accept the testimony into.
Yeah, there's nothing. It's all be written.
Just all go to staff and.
Yes, it would be real. It would be written testing.
It would be part of a uh someone could do a public records request to get it, but it wouldn't be part of an open hearing.
No, correct. And that's the whole.
But but I wanna challenge the thesis that this speeds things up because we still have the hundred and twenty day time clock regardless of this process before and after. Um I I per my personal opinion is this this cuts, basically you get it through without the public knowing about it. So there aren't a lot of people saying, I don't want this or have any different ideas and stuff like that. It's this is really about just not letting the public be involved and potentially be a roadblock.
The shameful pill.
Yeah.
Oh, Keith, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thanks. I just didn't wanna interrupt the, what I would advocate for with this law being in place is we have a standing policy that we have a um staff would talk to the mayor and we would have a um work session on an application that has no binding process to the application, but um staff could inform us not in here, but in there, exactly what's being proposed and let invite the community to attend and just that we all can give feedback without unbinding feedback to staff on what we think of such an application.
Lawyers.
Uh I think we need to think about it. I mean, the good part is nine seventy four doesn't take effect until a year from it takes effect July first, twenty twenty six.
I'm sorry, that one did. Yep, July, July first. We do have a little bit.
So we've got some time to think about it and my expectation is we're gonna get probably some information from Hapo before as this as time passes. So
Sure.
We can, we, I I, you know, I hear what you're saying and we can look into it. I I I don't know. Yeah.
Sounds like a hearing to me.
Yeah, I think um just on that, just backing out a second, like I mentioned, we're we'll have the planning department take on really a full audit of our code and process as it relates to state laws.
As we have all this spare money to utilize.
Like we need to hire another.
Staff time to do all this extra work.
Capacity is absolutely an issue and that'll be on my last slide. Um to me, it's 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 worth it. It is gonna take away from the other good work that we're doing, but I think the worst case is to, you know, for this community to just be at the whim. So we wanna try and do what we've done historically, which is to um comply with the state laws the Sherwood way. Um and I think we're fully on board with bringing not just nine seven four, but everything to you guys over the next year or so and really getting this.
Apparently unfortunate.
So is that slowing down our planning for Sherwood West as well?
It's slowing down everything.
Yeah.
I I basically have to have a had a planner at all times on the on the housing bills and that's what's gonna happen over the next year.
So planning for Sherwood West right now because it's still legally. Right. No, I I understand that, but I'm saying, I'm saying if that was taken care of, I still couldn't plan because in an effort to plan for more housing in Sherwood, I'm having to do this. And so I can't do that, you know? I can't.
Stay one housing and now we're gonna slow it down tomorrow.
I know, but it doesn't feel like that's where I that's where I figure, I feel like we are not being, we're talking past each other. They want more housing. We wanna plan Sherwood West to put more housing in. And if we if for some reason, we're we're not able to do it because we're we're not communicating.
I I've been a cynic. I don't believe the state legislature or the governor really cares about trying to solve the problem. They just want headlines that act like they're solving the problem.
Okay, but I care about, again, getting a house my kids can move into that's affordable. So I want.
I'm trying to figure out that problem.
Yeah.
We all care. We all.
No, I know we all do, but I'm just saying that so I, because that's not gonna be a headline, right? But I it it'll be an an addition to the community. And so that's why I'm trying to figure out, how do I, how do we get around this so that, you know, because I guess, yeah, we don't have unlimited money, so I can't just hire a bunch of planners to get through this in three months so that we can get on to it, right?
We can get on to it until the appeals process.
Again, assuming that the appeals process goes our way, right?
They can help us pay for another planner.
There was, there was another bill that allocated some dollars for this, but it's it's a token amount that'll get chewed up by just, you know, a handful of cities.
Here's what I'll say. Here's a great example. Like, so we were processing land use applications, right? That's that's the, that's where housing actually gets delivered through land use applications and building permits. I I have to pull a planner away from processing land use applications for development that's on the table now to comply with state planning laws.
Okay.
So it's just a great, it's just a good example. We got two planners that process land use application and one of them's basically trying to figure this stuff out. We'll tell. Um so, yeah, it does slow it down.
So that's.
Yep. Um.
That hundred and twenty days, where what's our average roughly for that right now?
We we always meet the hundred and twenty day rule. Um oh, I'm sorry, for engineering. It's less than that. It's less than that for sure.
So that's not.
Yeah, we're not, I'm not expecting any issues complying or that.
Exactly.
Yep. Um I, in the interest of time, I'm actually going to, I'm only gonna highlight, so middle housing, H B two one three eight, that's the governor's middle housing bill. I just say these are tweaks, updates, revisions, fixes to H B two thousand one. Um I think in the interest of time, I really wanna get to the charter discussion, so.
Can we just go back to just very quickly? I will say we did have some wins on this because the first revision of this on the cottage cluster eliminated the common space, eliminated the common room, and it created attached, which basically turned cottage clusters into warehouses. Um so we were able to get some changes on that to preserve what we wanna do with cottage clusters.
Right, yeah, especially for height. The one they did add in here that cottage clusters are allowed in subgroupings of up to four. And so they'll they'll be attached up to four, yes.
But they don't have the other.
They don't have the courtyard. Um still cannot go above typically one and a half stories. Yep.
We can just start. But I just wanna uplift the work the the mayor has done on behalf of Sherwood. Um Mayor Rosner was talking with Matthew Shabbold and the governor's office on a regular basis and working with the partners. So um understanding the concerns and really translating that into policy. I think the policy became better because of advocacy like Mayor Rosner. So I just wanna make sure the community understands that this is a better bill um because of the work that he did in partnership.
Absolutely.
So even though if if we didn't get everything we wanted, there were there were wins within it.
There was a lot of people working on that, but thank you.
Yeah, I heard your name a lot.
Um uh really quickly, H B two two five eight, this is the pre-approved site and building plans. Again, another uh no vote from the senator um would allow, is going to set up a program at the state level through uh the the planning department at the state level and the building department at the state level uh for pre-approved plans that would circumvent and and supersede our land use regulations. Um and then the one tool that we received, just to highlight that, um is H B thirty thirty one, which is infrastructure uh funding. And really appreciate the the funding that we've got. Um and to the extent that we qualify for this and there's a project, we'll pursue it. There are some strings attached in terms of the city and some other.
And by the state law.
Yeah.
Uh go very far too.
Yeah. Um in terms of, you know, discussion next step, happy to answer any questions on, you know, what we see as the impacts to existing city limits and also Sherwood West, happy to get into that discussion. Um we've kinda talked about the impacts on budget, staffing levels and achieving local priorities. You know, the other thing I'll say, you know, we have council goals, we have community uh members who are talking about tree code and other things. And, you know, to me, it's we gotta, we gotta really get our house in order in terms of housing code first, and then we can move on to those other things, but it is affecting what we can chew off in terms of our own pure and local priorities. Um and then the next steps, like I mentioned, a full code audit for uh clear and objective standards. We need to do a housing capacity analysis by twenty twenty seven. Um and then just a full code update for the twenty twenty five legislative uh bills. And, you know, one thing that we really wanted to drill down into tonight, cause it's a little more time since. uh bills. And, you know, one thing that we really wanted to drill down into tonight, because it's a little more time sensitive, is potential charter amendment. You know, we've discussed that um a little bit in the past. And so I'm just gonna turn it over to Carrie, who's gonna talk um in a little bit more detail about charter amendment.
Okay, so um home rule in Oregon, um generally in the back in the really old days, um turn of the century, the courts had determined that um local governments were an arm of the state. So uh and that 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 concept is known as Dillon's Rule. So the idea was that local governments had no home rule authority to do anything on their own because they were just an arm of a arm of a state. So um in the early nineteen twenties or nineteen oh six, that brought about a bunch of home rule amendments in other states. Uh Oregon voters voted to amend the Oregon constitution to uh adopt certain articles that protect uh city home rule authority. Um and uh prohibit uh and grant municipal voters the power to enact and amend their municipal charter subject to the constitution and the criminal laws of the state of Oregon. Um and uh to uh enact municipal legis legislation of every character in and for the municipality of districts. So it's the state constitution that gives cities authority to enact their own uh charter and regulations pursuant to that charter to implement policies. And um oftentimes or sometimes uh state statute and local regulations collide, right? And so this question of uh preemption between state rules and local standards has been um the subject of lots of of lots of legal cases. But the mo- the one from the modern era that most people um uh reference is from the nineteen fifties. It has to do with how PERS works and whether or not PERS legislation could preempt local standards about retirement pension planning. And what the court came up with is that um general laws address primarily to substantive, social, economic, and other regulatory objectives rest with the state. So when it has to do with the well-being of the citizenry of the state, the state can enact laws and in the interest and when there are conflicts, the local government rules have to go away. But what uh local governments retain under the under the state constitution is the uh local community's freedom to choose its own form. Um and that has to do with the concerns over procedures and the political form in which Sherwood operates and the way that it conducts its own business for its own political objectives. And so the court uh distinguished in this PERS case those two different things. And when it is a local procedure and related to the political form of the city, then home rule kicks in and can preempt state laws. So that's the foundation that we're working under when we're talking about how much control the city might exert to protect itself um against state intervention. And so um with that framework, I did some research to find out if there are any cases where this has come up in terms of the land use context, and there's only one. And it's where the city of Sandy um sued Metro arguing that the obligations to project a goal fourteen or goal eleven uh industrial lands. Uh you know, we have to count how many industrial lands we have. We have to know how many we're gonna need. And then we have to tell Metro that we're gonna provide enough industrial jobs. That's part of the Metro functional plan. That that obligation was uh inconsistent with the city's political form. And uh what the court said without any discussion at all was that Metro has this sort of penultimate regional government authority. And so it doesn't get we get into the same holding that we have from the discussion from um the PERS case. So what this means is we don't have any direct on point guidance about to what degree procedures and land use procedures in particular might be protected under home rule authority. Um the challenge in my mind to get my head around this is land use in Oregon is a statewide program. Oregon was the first state to adopt a statewide land use program. And the statutes are chock full of procedures. I mean, Sherwood's program was probably built on those procedures as baseline, right? They're a state law procedures. And when I think about this, I was like, gosh, are we gonna go after all of those that have been in the place since the, you know, early eighties? And when I thought about it further, I thought, you know, the thing about those procedures is they set a floor. They say when you're approving these types of applications, you have to have a public hearing and you can't give less than a hundred foot notice. And then the city of Sherwood has decided they want to give a thousand foot notice. What's different about the bills we're seeing out of Salem right now is they prohibit the city from giving more notice. They prohibit the city from holding a hearing. They prohibit the city from going above the floor. And that's what makes these bills, I think, different than what we have out there in the land use realm historically. Um so that seems um to me to be um fundamentally different. The other point I want to make about this quickly about procedures and uh is um generally, as you probably know, that when we implement legislation, we want it to be rationally related to the objective we're trying to achieve, right? And all of this is related to the need to generate more housing units, right? And particularly, I think, affordable housing units. Um many of the bills that uh Eric talked about um sub subscribe condent, you know, freeze the city's procedures, but they don't shorten the timeline in which the decision has to be made. So so you've taken away, you've taken away the city council's review, but you've left it with staff to take a hundred and twenty days. So the decision isn't necessarily gonna get made faster by you cutting off these procedures, which I think brings up, you know, there are no purpose and policy statements that precede these bills. So I can't say exactly what this particular thing is going to achieve. And I think that that we're we're sort of, we're just out. We must grab everything we possibly can to help achieve this goal without any data that shows that it's actually gonna generate more housing. I think, you know, you've seen the statistics. We're not, we've been doing these um preemption of local government standards since about House Bill two thousand one. And we're not seeing these increases in housing starts. I mean, and that's because there's there's probably not, they're probably not connected directly.
That goes back, that was two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
So it's been six years.
Six years. And you would think we would see some that that would go like this, but it's not. It's going like this. And, you know, that probably the economy, there's probably lots of reasons, cost of infrastructure, you know, there's probably lots of reasons that have nothing to do with the regulations themselves, but the regulations are the things that are getting are are, you know, are sitting in this in this blender and then Eric is just like a hamster in a wheel trying to chase.
And 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 the state isn't even, okay, so they pass one set of bills, fifteen thirty seven or whatever, and then there's not even enough time to understand if they've even had any impact at all, good or bad or or different or, you know, and then we're already passing another round of bill. And then in twenty six, are we gonna have a whole other slew of bills?
Well, that's the thing with fifteen thirty seven. We waive all these standards and, you know, through the mandatory adjustments, then nine seven four comes along and gets rid of all the design standards that fifteen seventy three already took care of. I mean, it's.
I I, you know, you can ma- I think you can make the argument whether you agree with some of these bills, right? The variances and the removal of standards. It's pretty clear to see that could have a cost reductive effect, uh like, you know, more units per acre, less fancy designs. I understand that. I fail to see, to your point, any argument that removing the public from the process and and elected bodies and appointed bodies from the process, that doesn't isn't actually lowering the timeline to your point. How is that improving? How is that increasing the supply or reducing the cost of housing? Uh like you said, there's no.
And can I just add, like, reducing the co- I agree with you on the reducing the cost, but we're not addressing, it's still mar- most of it's still market rate housing, right? So is it actually reducing the cost to the concern?
Yeah. I'm just saying, even if you can see that argument, the 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 argument that we we have to keep this under shadow and private and 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 from away from the public eye goes against all everything that that America is about, right, or supposed to be about, and for no rational gain.
So I was gonna turn it over to Ryan to talk a little bit about charter mechanics and the timeline of cost.
Yeah, so so obviously this conflicts, you all know goal one, right? Goal one is public process and the land use, right? So we have, we have these conflicting statutes. Uh one of the ways um that that we can defend against this and a- as Carrie said, uh you know, a lot of this is is up in the air because there just isn't a lot of authority out there right now. Um so what I want to do is as your attorney and what Carrie wants to do as your land use attorney is give you all of the arrows in your quiver that you can possibly have um to to preserve the home rule of our city. One way to do that is to amend the charter. Um it is a a potential way to do that. You amend the charter, you say things like um the language that we have. For example, on the annexation, determining the city's jurisdictional boundaries is declared to be a matter inherent to its political form. So we preserve that. We ask our citizens to say this is very important to us as a community. And when we litigate that, it gives us that arrow in our quiver to fire against the state's preemption. So I've talked with you a little bit about this individually. Um I've tried to give you the the pros and the cons to it. It's not a guarantee. It's an arrow in our quiver. Um so that's that's how I want to to point that out to you. And I know, I apologize, we're running up against some time and the. Yeah, so 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 that's that that's essentially the baseline for what we're doing is we want to be able, you you know, we're working and and I don't want to say we're working with the League of Oregon Cities, but we're we're socializing this with the league. Um and I anticipate speaking with our general counsel a little bit more. We we just communicated through email about this a little bit last week. And it's obviously been a a busy week in the state of Oregon, so we're trying to figure out kinda kinda how to make this work. So with that being said, um go over some of this charter language, but council would need to act quickly. And that's the consensus that I was going to ask for some direction tonight from you all. Because the if if we do want to act on this, if you all choose to to give us some direction, we would need to bring you a resolution by next council meeting to get this on the chamber of power. And and we can do it. Um you you know, I'll make it happen. We'll we'll push for it, but it's up to you and we need your your guidance to to do that. So.
And we could have a special.
We could, yeah, we could.
Is getting us additional arrows in our quiver, though, is that adding additional? And I know this sounds naive, but is it adding additional, like, we are gearing up for a fight here versus we're trying to come to an acceptable um agreement to get more housing?
I I think it can be both, counselor. I I really do. I think I think the, you know, we wanna, we will know. And I want to be apolitical in how I approach this with you, but I think you can approach it from both directions. I think you want to to speak softly and carry a a big stick.
Ryan's here to present us our options for us to have the conversation. We can't really ask.
And I'm not gonna give you my political opinion on it other than to say there's there's inherent risk to it. And I I know Counselor Mace had his hand up.
I mean, one of the different options, some of it's it's, we are publicly declaring some of these are value statements. Essentially putting in the charter, you know, on the public process. We, if we put it, if we advance a charter amendment to kind of try to bake in, we we are stating that we value, we believe in goal one. We we want public process. Um we want the community to be able to weigh in on land use type actions, annexation type actions. I think it's inherent to the, it's a, it's part of a value statement and defense.
Counselor, I I appreciate that. What I what I will also say is I have socialized this in addition to Lee Oregon Cities with some other city attorneys and with some other cities around our area. And I don't wanna, I I don't want to betray that and say who they are in public because they haven't spoken with their counselors yet because we're on time. However, I do think that there there would be appetite um for for further involvement from other cities. So.
So can we go over some of the language thoughts you have?
Sure. Do you want me to go over that, Carrie?
I can do it.
Why don't you take that?
Okay, um so I I don't know if I said this. So my recommendation is that we stay away from the substance. Right? We're not gonna touch, there can be no zoning. We're not gonna touch uh mandatory variances for building height. We're not gonna touch. Those are all substantive standards and I think the likelihood of success is low. We're gonna stay in the procedures. And I think the the amendment that has the highest likelihood of success relates to public participation. Um what we have Ryan and Eric and I have done is brainstormed some language. Um we, this is, this was our first brainstorm. My expectation is that we will modify this before we go. Um but this was our first, our first shot across the bow uh with respect to language. Um what I really like about this is um the third sentence. It says, as a city that is of the people and for the people, Sherwood is committed to hearing from the people. Um and I think that that embodies really what we're talking about. And um as such, the city council shall by ordinance establish the procedures governing citizen involvement in land use matters. Um max, I there are terms like maximize transparency um to provide meaningful public participation um and that these procedures will not be preempted. Um we have another uh section here that talks about no decision on a type three or higher application shall be made without at least one duly noticed public hearing. Um and and there'll be a right to appeal. And then the third part is notice within a thousand feet. Um I I want to think about those sort of substantive standards a little bit more. I'm not sure if it should be type three or type two. I think we might want to tweak that. And I want to think about as we dial down in these procedures more and we embody them in our charter, we're kind of stuck with them. So I want to make sure that we don't use a label that we don't want to live with forever. Um so that's why I think that this this language may be subject to some tweak.
Where's the charter define a type three?
Um, yeah. Other comments about this language out of the gate? I mean, looking at it cold?
But I love the first, everything in the first paragraph. I'm just concerned about um the second. Um and the third, I'm I'm very supportive of the third. The second paragraph is is one that I think probably needs some chewing on, maybe the whole thing, little, you know, more nuanced, but.
I love the premise line best.
I like the first one really well.
The other, in the in the interest of transparency, um you know, there is a cost to going out. And so what I would, what I would estimate and what generally Washington County says, about a dollar fifty per voter, we have a little over fourteen thousand.
Twenty twenty grand.
I I would estimate fifty. I I would, I would bet it's it's gonna be closer.
We could use one type resources for this, yeah.
So so I, again, I want you to have all the information you have and you need to make a decision. No, 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 no.
This would go in November?
Uh this would go in January, January thirteenth is my timeline. And I'll send my timeline out to you.
Before.
It goes into play to the line.
Gotcha.
I think Courtney has.
Oh, Courtney, you have a question?
Oh. It's just a little technical. Um the the tech, just technical on the back on the last slide. Um I like to read through to make sure that everyone can understand it. I am, like, I think I'm a pretty good vocabulary, but I don't know faces.
It's a typo.
Yeah.
It's it's phases.
It's like there's a term called faces, but I was just. I I looked it up. I mean, you could use that apparently, but okay, good. Taking it.
So if we assume that this does get passed as a charter, are we also setting ourselves up for more legal costs to defend it and other things? Is that what we're saying?
Potentially. I mean, that's that's a. So we're not obligating ourselves.
We would have the option to defend it if it's.
Option, but I would also add that it would be a pretty bad look for the state to come back and sue us because we don't.
I agree. I agree. I just wanted to be totally clear that we're not just saying, hey, we'll do the one time cost and we'll pay for this. We're also saying, and by the way, because we really do believe in this, we're now gonna defend it in court and that.
That we can get our citizens to understand that.
We, I think we can understand. And keep in mind too, if it got to that point at some future date, like when we sued the state over the the uh CFA ruling, we we had fifteen cities that contributed to that, and I think our legal costs were like five thousand dollars.
Okay.
So there's a lot of of ways that that can be mitigated down the road too. But it's a, it's a valid point.
If I may, just a value statement too, in addition to the word, um land use goal number one is really, really important. And I have defended it many times and I'd be happy to um support your work in making sure it's part of the Sherwood process.
So so with that said, I I think we would respectfully ask for some direction on where you would like us to go. This will be a significant amount of work. We we are happy to do the work. We just need. We, we are happy to do the work, we just need some direction.
Yeah, and just really quickly, the other one, the, the other um, draft language we propose is around annexations, we just talked about it a little bit, so.
And we would put these both forward as two separate.
Absolutely.
And I'd say we can add, if you're interested in other topics, we could help put those on the ballot as well.
That is maybe a suggestion, I mean, we have a two-week timeline here to get this in front of us by the twenty-first. Would it be advantageous or not to have a counselor or two counselors help do work smithing, or should we just?
I might leave it to the lawyers.
Leave it with attorneys, yeah.
So I think.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I love leaving this part to attorneys, do we also get a, what does this practically mean in plain English?
Sure.
Thing for, you know what I mean, like, if it goes into the.
Oh, there'll be an exclamation point statement later.
That's part of the process.
Yeah.
Right, I know.
They have that.
We don't have to have that by two weeks from now? Okay, perfect, all right, that was my.
Amendments, do we need most, both of these charter amendments?
If you're going to go, then I think, you, my, my recommendation would be to take them both, just from a fiscal uh, point of view, it would make more sense.
Okay.
And, and the, and frankly, part of the reason, my thinking of this is the pattern we're seeing is like, when we did exclusive uh. Cottage cluster-only zoning, we immediately saw legislation attacking cottage clusters. I will bet lunch that there'll be legislation that goes after an annexation policy in the next session too, so. Or it's just getting ahead of us.
Well, and that's another comment then, is by doing this, what kind of attention are we going to draw on ourselves from, from this state?
We are having our, our annexation policy we put in place, which by the way is effectively the same as uh, we were ten in those boroughs, is already drawing that attention. We're already hearing the wrong lines.
We did read this, like.
So on this, as part of, you know, a lot of what are from a value statement for us, definitely on annexations is, and, you know, having annexation agreements, being able to phase it. Type things, um, we'll have control of that, but then is it already baked in or is there? Words that should, could be added to this that says. If the state created, you know, allowed a community, a neighborhood to be built, abutting the city. You know, are we able to block any access to sewer pipes in our jurisdiction or water pipes, you know, connected to our water system? I think we're already baked in on the water, but we just want to make sure, is it, just, you know, just covering, make sure we don't have any unincorporated neighborhoods built next to us. I think it's already in the law, I'm just talking out.
How does that work for like electrical grid or something, where we're connected to everybody except Texas? Well, the, if, the, the only place we'd have, have control is like water, we don't serve, we don't allow water to be served outside, you know, even unless we're going to another provider.
In general, right now, I believe there is law that prohibits. Unincorporated neighborhoods to be now built, uh, abutting a city. But um, doesn't mean they can't change the damn law.
A lot of those laws went in fact because of what happened with the Loa where they were built, the infrastructure was built to substandard levels.
Yeah, yeah.
So I was throwing that, it didn't, it wouldn't mind to be too short of a time to think about that, but.
So I'm in favor of seeing both of these at our next city council meeting for a vote.
Do you want to schedule a special in between? So we can tweet, you can, we got like.
We can.
I would be okay with scheduling something for like next Tuesday, so.
What's, what's the, what's the point of the, what's the point of the?
If everyone's comfortable that with, that if they come back with something, we might not have a long time to get any changes, I'm okay with that.
Again, now that this is looking.
I just.
They could be brushing them if we try to have a special session next week.
Can we, uh, we have to have a session or can we just get emails and comments back to, you know what I mean? We have to be physically, have an actual work session, can we give them feedback?
We guys can email.
I can email counselors directly and that won't create a, a real meeting, you can't talk to each other about what.
As soon as you reply, don't reply all, yeah, okay, I think that's a good compromise for me.
All right, I just wanna, I'm just coming out of suggesting Dan.
First sentence, would there ever be a situation where territory within the city was not part of the city?
Uh, could be, yes, perk.
Uh, than the city would not. They have some islands, but they're not than the city.
Yeah, we had an island, right, still did by the, still get employment area that was, that we had.
We still have an island over of the, uh, Edie Road.
Yeah.
Um, but those aren't in the boundaries.
Well, it's all what you were referring to.
No, I just, because it says all.
This, this, this is, these, these two sentences are in our, our existing charter already, we added to it because I wanted to sort of start where I was gonna put it, and so.
Yeah, and I know we have to, we have to.
Existing.
Get to the meeting, I want to thank Carrie especially for being so available, um, you know, they've been working on this while I've been gone for the last year and have really done a, done a bang-up job for, for Carrie for this, so.
Yeah, and I, and before we close this out, just kind of my thoughts on all this, we are, uh, well, at least I am personally committed to. Seeing Sherwood West through and, and making sure that it's built out in a way that's um, consistent with the need, which is middle housing and consistent with. What we promised our community in the concept plan, so a lot of this is just to make sure we can do that. We don't end up with something that our community doesn't want, so.
Something that like a clinical form.
Really, I, I see all of this as a protecting ourselves from the state. Not, I know Taylor, you talk a lot about, you know, making sure good relationships are developed, that's not what I see this, I see this as protecting ourselves from the state.
Right, I just want, I, I hope it comes across as that, right, with, with the mayor just said, uh. We're trying to get middle housing built and it's gonna solve this one part of the housing problem, it's not gonna solve everything, but it'll solve this little bit, and we want to be good partners in that versus. Not in our backyard and we're throwing up all sorts of barriers, that's the only.
Housing, there are housing that makes sense for that area.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Housing that, and I have, there's housing that you wouldn't put low-income housing out there with no transportation, you know, none of the other things that you need for that.
But that's exactly what I hope comes across, right, and it's like, hey, it's not Sherwood saying, we don't want any more houses, it's, we're being good funded.
Well, the conversation felt, felt like it was and asking questions and it wasn't attacking voters or developers. And I think that's what we need to get to, is ask the right questions to get to an overall goal without saying you, this particular group is bad.
Yeah, and frankly, our new annexation rule is really designed to get that uh, agreement and, and certainty between the city and the developers, people who think comes in. Yeah, and I agree, it's all of us, so. All right, well, I'm gonna go.